Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 23, 2018 Board of Selectment Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We need a motion to go into executive session, please. This session is due to contract negotiations. Any discussion in an open session could be detrimental to the bargaining negotiations.
So moved.
Moved in second. A roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the Board of Selectment Meeting of April 23, 2018. Mr. Mayor, do we have any public participation that you know of?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of regular board meeting, April 9, 2018.
So moved.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number four, appointments. We are going to advertise the following committees, due to the fact that we didn't get enough to the first time around. So I'll have a motion to advertise the Advisory Board of Public Works, Albion Cultural Exchange, Council on Aging, Fence Viewer, Finance Committee, and the Permanent Building Committee. One more time.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let us go into the committee appointments terms until April 30, 2021. Board of Appeals, there are two openings, one full member, one alternate.
I move we nominate Chip Tarbell for the member position. Or appoint. I move we appoint Chip Tarbell to the member position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion on the motion.
Can I understand, maybe from Stephen and Sheri, the process for applying was a letter of interest and resume or CV, is that right?
Correct.
Letter and.
A letter and both.
And.
And both. And going through, I notice, not just for this particular applicant, but for some others too, it was just a couple of sentences, and I just, I don't know anything about him. And did we not get his resume, or?
Did not, yeah. We didn't.
Did we ask for that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I think, just as a matter of practice, we've always talked, the last year, we've talked about making sure that we had resumes for every applicant that wants to apply for something, because this is a term renewal, I realize, but I don't know anything about Mr. Tarbell and a few others, and I think some other members on the board, I mean, Maureen and I came on at the same time, Peter and Tony also came on, probably, I don't think you appointed them others, so I don't know.
Correct.
There was like four or five people, I noticed, that didn't provide resumes, this just being the first one, you know, in order. So I just have a concern about that, from a process standpoint.
So to address your concern, could we make it so that it is a board policy, instead of just saying that that's what we request? Can we make it that it's a mandatory item from here on in?
Absolutely, the board can do what they want.
Because right now, it was a request. It wasn't a mandatory item in my.
It was an expectation.
It was an expectation. It said submit letter and resume.
Right.
So I think everyone should submit a letter and resume, or it's equivalent. And if that doesn't happen, then I don't think so much should be considered. And if we want to make that a more stated policy, I mean, it was advertised that way in the newspaper, so I think it was stated. But I don't feel comfortable with any of, any appointments. I don't care who it is, without that.
I absolutely follow what you're saying, and I think, I didn't notice Chip hadn't attached a resume, only because I'm familiar with his resume, and I'm familiar with his job qualifications for this, that he's worked in building industry. He's, you know, to me, very eminently qualified. I've been before him on the board on neighborhood issues, so I totally see what you're saying. For me, I kind of didn't notice that I'd missed the resume, because I filled in how qualified I think Chip was. But I agree. And it's something, if Chip is appointed, I think, just for good reference, we should ask him to submit his resume, so we have it in the packet. And also, for those people who are running, because they've been in a position for certain years, they never had to do this before, so it might have been overlooking it. I absolutely get what you're saying, and I just have the luxury of knowing Chip's professional background. I've seen him on the board, and I know how dedicated he is to the town.
I agree. It's tough to assess him. I mean, I served with Chip on the board for 10 years, so I wasn't looking for his resume either, but I probably don't know some of the other ones, right? So it's a good point. I might stop short of making it a, I hate to create a rule that binds our own hands. Maybe we show extreme preference for people who comply, because sometimes we have people, we have four openings, and we're looking for people, and one person says, "I'll do it," and somebody might know them, if they don't submit a resume or something, I'd hate to somehow, we wouldn't be able to appoint them, or, let's stop a little short, but it's a good point. You know, I think, when I first got on the board, I think there was a whole lot of people that I sat here, and it was, everybody knows, good old Johnny whoever. I'm like, I don't know him, but I approve, because.
So I tried to find out.
Yeah, yeah. My fellow board members that know him and all that, yeah. So anyway, Chip's, he's been on the board since 2000. He's, you know, he's working on his 20th year, coming up with being on it. He's been on the Permanent Building Committee. He has done the, he worked on the Recreation Bond stuff, Steve, right? All the fields, all the tracks. His career, he built hockey rinks and facilities and school grounds at Belmont Hill. He's, to just, couldn't be a better guy for it, really, so, and has just great judiciousness in his decision-making on the board, too, so.
So I agree with both groups, really, separating them off, but I mean, I think we should have both. But as Brian just mentioned, we probably shouldn't, probably make it a rule of some sort. I think it's better to certainly give more preference to people that submit everything we're asking for, so we can see what's going on. But I don't know him either, so, you know, it's definitely, and I should, if it's 20 years, it probably took him too long to do a resume, probably, but.
He probably did one way, but we probably have it on file somewhere, from 1990.
Back then.
Yeah, 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 no. Hey, and you made the point, too. In fairness, when people are up for reappointment, we've never been a stickler about it, and we probably should be. So, you know, in fairness to him and anybody else who's, you know, up for a renewal, or whatever we call it, it's never been something that we held firm on, but it's a good point.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, I think the idea of having a clear policy makes sense, because it's advertised as submit a letter of interest and a CV or resume. Sheri, you said you followed up with these folks who didn't provide resumes, right?
Yes, yes.
And they still didn't.
Everybody I followed up with.
And they still didn't provide a resume.
No.
That, to me, is concerning. I don't, I don't, I don't care how long someone's been on the board, I just think that, as a matter of process, I think that any, you know, from a transparency standpoint alone, and any Board of Selectment, or whatever will be called after tomorrow, should be able to, you know, know who they're voting on. So I feel like I'll have to abstain from this one, because I don't, you know, I don't know one way or the other, but, you know, some of the other folks who took the time to write the letters and provide their resumes, I feel like I at least have a sense of who they are and what they might bring, and so I don't think it's really fair to them, you know. So that's my, that's my take on it. I don't see any reason not to have that, and if we're changing something that's been done one way, then so be it. We're always changing and evolving, so this is just another way, you know, we're just changing the way we do things. I think that that's a good thing.
Very good. Thank you. Not missing anything.
Okay, so the motion was made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention?
I have to abstain.
Okay.
And I don't like that I have to do that, because I think as, I should have a vote in that, but I'm not going to vote on someone that I don't know anything about, and I don't think it's appropriate to not provide information.
Okay, let's move on to the capable advisory, oh, no, sorry. Alternate. We still have to do the alternate, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion for the alternate?
Based on the resume presented, Michael Feeley, I would nominate, based on just what a great, he seems to fit the bill for this.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for Michael Feeley. Any further discussion?
I just think he's a perfect example of the impact a resume can make, because you understand, you know, what, you know, what his experience is, what he'd bring to the table, and I think he looks to be very well-qualified, and a name I'm not familiar with other, but he looks like he would be an outstanding candidate for that.
While he's no Chip Tarbell, I reluctantly go along with him.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now let's move on to the capable advisory board. We have one opening, and we have one person applying, Daniel Lieber. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion.
Moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Capital Planning Committee, we have two openings, and two people submitted their responses, Franklin Leon Jr. and David Witton. Do I have a motion from the floor?
Yes. A motion to appoint both.
We have a motion to move the slate. It's been seconded. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Conservation Commission, two openings. We have two applicants. We have Peter Miller and Robert Romano requesting to be put onto the Conservation Commission. Do I have a motion to move the slate?
Motion to nominate both, Peter Miller and Robert Romano.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have discussion.
I would like to amend the motion, because, again, Mr. Romano didn't provide a resume, so I don't know much about him, so I think if we took them separately and voted on each.
Okay, so let us.
Both as a motion on the floor. Right. So I could take back my motion, right? Just take it back, so.
Yep.
Again, so let us go to do one, so I'll entertain a motion then to approve Peter Miller.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now, we have Mr. Robert Romano on here. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Robert Romano.
Do I have a second?
Second, based on the substance of his letter.
Right.
Right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on Mr. Romano? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What an abstention. Thank you. Cultural Council, we have one opening. Man Meet Desai?
Desai.
Desai? Sorry, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Men Meet Desai.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I just want to say, I know Men Meet should move to Wakefield, I think, a year or two ago, and she is someone who saw this posted on social media, and is, wants to get involved in the town, and so I just want to say that it's working. She's new to town, really excited. I think her background, her work at, on diversity at a big law firm, a big company, will be perfect for our diversity cultural council.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Disability Commission, we have one opening. Jonathan Savetti. Do we have a motion?
Move to place Jonathan Savetti on the.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Rights Commission, two openings. We have four candidates. What is the choice of the table?
I move to nominate Robert Vincent.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for Robert Vincent. Any discussion?
So Bob's, Bob's been on the Human Rights Commission, he's already served a term, he has almost a perfect attendance record. I worked with him on a couple of events that they did. He's great, he's vested in the organization, I think he's a great addition. They talked to him, that this is a choice that the HRC feels comfortable with.
Very good. Yeah, I agree. I've known him for a while, he's fabulous. JAG, attorney, judge, just very qualified, big policy person, so he's a good asset for that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We have one more to go. We have a motion to appoint one of the remaining three?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Kevin Dua.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So Kevin received the MLK Day Award this year, he was, he won a community member's award, he just ran the Boston Marathon, he is getting national accolades for his work as a teacher at Cambridge, read in Latin, so we would, it would be great for him to serve on the HRC.
Very good.
100% in agreement with Mr. Dua's nomination. I know some of the other people that put it in, and I think they're great, I would want to encourage them to keep going. I'm a graduate, a high school graduate with Katherine Todges, so even though certain people weren't appointed this go-around, I still encourage them to look for ways to participate, because I know that they would, they would make nice additions somewhere.
Thank you. Ed, do you have something?
I think that, looking at this, the fact that we have four applicants for two openings is something I like to see, and I feel like we don't see that often enough with enough of these boards and committees, and so I don't know what it is we need to do differently for that. I like that there are new names. I too heard Kevin speak at the MLK event, and he was very compelling. But I want to, I want to figure out how we can get more new names into the mix for all of these committees, and I think this is a good example of, there is an interest level, but how do we inspire that across the board? I mean, we're having to repost, because we don't even have a warm body to fill some of these slots, so how can we do things differently? I think, to Maureen's point, the social media piece is important, to get that out there, but I just think we're still not there, so I'd like to see more names, and also different names.
Yeah, I have just thoughts on that. So I'd be incumbent on the, I think, the chairpersons of these boards and committees to actually recruit new people, you know, in the, in the, in any management world, your job as a manager is your, even when you don't have a job opening, you're recruiting people, so that when something opens up, you've got ready, a ready pool of people to step in who understand what the job is and are willing to do it. So I think we should be kind of recruiting a short list of people at all times, and keep them in the know, and I think sometimes we sit here and we have six people show up for one spot, and we're like, oh, man, that person, we hate sending them away. Maybe we should keep them in a little database and proactively hit them when some interesting job opens up, and say, hey, yeah, I know you came out for whatever, but this is opening up, it could work for you. But I think the chairpersons of the board. But I think the, the chairpersons of the board, because it will usually be the chair and the board members themselves who are, who bear the result of this process. We throw it out in the paper, we get one name and hopefully a resume back, and we appoint them, and then the board comes to us a month later and says, what are you guys doing? That's, you know, that's the wrong person, you know, so, you know, they should have as part of their role, you know, keep a ready, a ready list of people who, who you think would be a good fit and recommend them into the job. I mean, they know what, what job needs to be done, they should be looking for folks, so.
That makes sense, though, to keep the database as well, too, in our hands.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah.
Because this way here, when more openings come up, we can hand that to the chairs of the alternate boards.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I think we could possibly do a better job of just educating residents of what these positions are and what they entail, because, I mean, a lot of them, unless you're kind of in the know, you don't really know, you know, what they are, what the time commitments are, what the meeting schedules are, and so I think us doing a better job of community awareness about what these things are would be helpful, too, because we have so many new people coming to town, I'd like to be able to, you know, get them on board. New names, different names, change it up.
Do we have to finalize?
You need to vote on them.
Yes. No further discussion, all in favor, Kevin Dow?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do, thank you.
Dua.
Dua.
Dua. So.
Do. Thank you.
If I may, I won't make a motion unless we're inclined to support it. I know that the Human Rights Commission has, there's two appointees that need to be, two appointments that need to be made by the School Committee, I believe, and I don't know. So, what if we sent the people that you vouched for, what if, I'd like to make a motion if people are inclined, I'll hold off, that we just send a formal communication to the School Committee that says we recommend these, these two candidates.
Sure. Aren't they, they applied and they, these are good resumes?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's already four at the School Committee, so.
There's already four looking for the two spots?
Yeah, you know, we've spoken, I've spoken to the HRC and the current chairs sitting right here behind me, but we've talked about that, there are, HRC has a lot of folks interested, and HRC has potential in the coming years to have more volunteers. I mean, they have people come to their meetings, who have come to every single meeting to care about stuff, so figure out ways to either create subcommittees, you know, event planners, kind of use, so you don't need to sit on the board, but you can help out in different ways, and so I encourage all the boards to kind of think like that, but especially one that does as much programming as the HRC does.
Just, was it, so the HRC, didn't they just expand from like eleven to thirteen also? So, this is, this is gross, so, I mean, that's something you don't always see, usually it's like a replacement situation, right, or, so this is, this is good, but like for the next one, the permanent building, we have four openings and two people, again, so it's like, there's a lot of vacancies that maybe if people wanted to shift.
Do we have comments? No, David, no.
So, anyway, I agree. That's it.
Okay, we all set with this one? Let's move on to number eight, please. Permanent Building Committee, we have four openings. We have two candidates right now, Jason Cohen and Christopher Callanan. Ed?
Can I make a motion that we just defer this since we're reposting it and then wait to see what the applicant pool looks like, because, you know, if we fill two now, then we only have two open, but what if there are three that we really like in the second round? So if we're going to post, I feel like we should get, have everyone have an opportunity.
Except are there meetings that they need people to vote on?
Right, that's my question.
My only concern with that, and it's a good thought, but with the Walton School Project going on, there are votes that this board will have to take, I think they may not have a quorum if they don't have enough.
Do we know that, or?
My sense is that we would not. Sorry.
Do you know when the next vote would be for them? Because our next vote would be in two weeks.
May, no, three.
I mean, like, our next meeting is two weeks, right?
Right, we could, we, you know what? They could hold off. I don't see why they couldn't, it's just paying bills. I'm great about not paying them anyway, so.
I just think it'd be better levels of playing field, so if we're going to have a second round of people applying, then we at least have four spots, and then we put the right people in the right spots.
It's not an adjudicatory board, so you don't have to worry about that, like some of the others, so certainly, I think we could certainly do that.
So that's, that's the motion, is just to defer that to the next meeting, since we're reposting, and then make the determination of filling the two, the four openings.
There's a motion to defer the appointment of the Permanent Building Committee to our next meeting in May. Do I have a second?
Second.
And discussion on motion, all in favor?
I'm, I'm, I'll vote for it, but I also, like, these people did what we asked them to do, so, you know, I want to acknowledge that, too, and if there's only two next, I would say, at the next meeting, regardless of how many apply.
Both of these are current members, correct?
Correct.
So it's a reappointment for both of these two, which holds some value.
Sure. And they've done this, this current planning board, I think, has done a very good job on recent projects, so.
So.
If there's no harm in doing it, though, I didn't see why, just like the two weeks and then do it, if that's all right.
Motion was moved and seconded, and any further discussion on deferring? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Recreation Commission, three openings. We have Todd Fikes, Annie Duval, and Christine Gagano. I will take and entertain a motion, if you will, to move the slate.
Motion to move all three for the appointments.
Do I have a second? Do I have any discussion?
I would like to amend it again, to just do them separately, because two of them provided resumes, one did not.
Okay. Withdraw?
Yes, withdraw, yes.
One at a time. I'll entertain a motion to approve the first applicant on the Todd Fikes.
Right, motion to appoint Todd Fikes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Having a motion to appoint Annie K. Duval?
Motion to also appoint Annie K. Duval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve, appoint Christine Gagano?
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Just, just to read the letter that she did submit, she didn't send a resume, but she's done, she's been on the Recreation Committee, Commission for thirty-two years, and she was the first woman chair of the Recreation Commission, that she's been the chair for the twelve, or she was a chair for twelve years, so she's done it for a long time, it sounds like.
Took a little hiatus, and now she's coming back. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll think she took a hiatus.
Same reasons.
No?
It says she's, this month will mark the beginning of her thirty-second year on the Recreation Commission.
I thought she was off. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so now she's back on for another three years. Thank you very much. Let's go to licenses and permits. We have a request for a one-day liquor license for Rhoda Morris for May fifth, two thousand eighteen, from twelve PM to four PM at the Americal Civic Center. Permits and everything have been submitted to the Rec Department, and they forwarded on to us, so. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Do we know what the event is?
It's on the application.
I didn't see it.
No, it's not, I think it's a birthday party, though.
Birthday party?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Presentation and action items, we have a request from the library to accept and expend a gift, a gift to the library in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents from various donors, with thanks.
Motion to put the forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents from various donors to, that be accepted. Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a request from the library to donate library discards to the friends of the library. Have a motion?
Just a question, just.
Ed?
Remind me, what is a discard, just educationally, what is a discard?
Well, the books at the library are town property.
Okay.
Okay, so, every year, there's books that are older that they donate to the friends of the library, and they have their book sale.
Right.
Part of it is that, so, there's no way of disposing of town-owned assets without the Board of Selectment.
Gotcha, so discards, I gotcha. Okay, thank you. So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have a request from the Wakefield Repertory Theater to hang banner from July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, to August sixth, two thousand eighteen. This would be in front of the Civic Center, crossing May. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Something to sing about, Paul.
Yes. Request from Kimberly Smith regarding statement of interest. Mr. Mayo, could you give us a little?
Sure, this is the statement of interest that the school department, that's been approved by the School Committee for the Wakefield Memorial High School, sent into the School Building Association to see about getting on the list of priorities. It doesn't, does not bind the town to anything, it is basically the same request that we have, this board has pushed forward in the past for this school.
So, from us, do you need?
And he's already approved it.
So what do you need from us at this point?
Just that the Selectmen have approved the submission by the School Committee, or endorse it, I guess.
So we don't need to vote.
I move.
Yeah, you need to vote, yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion then, from the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? Ed?
Just wondering, like, because, Steve, we have the school buildings, what is the, what is, what is our role in preparing this, if any, or what is your role in this?
Zero, but I think that that's a mistake, so I will work with the new superintendent, I do.
Because, I mean, because ultimately, I mean, we're, we're in charge of the buildings, and so this, I mean, this is a, facilities, it's a hybrid.
Right, it's a hybrid, exactly.
It's not just, you know, a school decision, so, I mean, I think this, this is nicely done, but I think that we could help them.
Exactly.
To do a better job with it.
Yeah, I will be, I've already reached out to the superintendent and look forward to working with the new one to help them in the same.
Because it's very significant, you know, for us to, you know, be in good position to potentially get a building, and I think if we can offer our own resources to kind of help with this, to beef it up, to bulk it up, I'd like to see us do that.
Which is how we push the galvan over the edge.
Yeah.
Was by that, that involvement, so.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I think you have a political and big-picture lens.
Thank you.
Yes, in a good way, to know how to navigate the system that someone who hasn't worked in the MMA and with other towns has.
Yeah, I mean.
Brian?
Yeah, I actually met with Steve and talked about this exact issue, is doing this better, more cohesively, longer planning, maybe put a, you know, a strong committee on it, there's a lot of able-bodied folks that are dying to help out with this stuff, I think we, whenever we dip into this well, we should put our absolute best foot forward, so, and, and hey, the, the school department's got a lot going on, we have the buildings, definitely joined forces, you know, it's, it's good for the whole town, we should all work together on this stuff, so, spot on.
Very good.
I just feel like we have a lot of untapped talent here within town that would be willing to volunteer, I mean, you see some of these resumes, and, I mean, the experience they have with development and the like, I mean, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Love to get a lot more people involved. So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have the library union contract, it's before you, I'll entertain a motion to accept the contract as presented to us by Mr. Mayo.
Okay, absolutely. We were very, very pleased to present to this board one of our outstanding union contracts, regarding the library. This is a three-year deal, consistent with the other deal, other unions. It is a one and a half percent cost of living increase at six-month intervals, which is also consistent with the other unions that we have closed our contracts with. A new step on July first, two thousand nineteen, so next fiscal year, and a new step on July first, two thousand twenty. Longevity has been deleted and rolled into the contract as a savings of the town, and two positions have been upgraded, a circulation, circulation of circulation position and the maintenance supervisor position. All in, the, the cost of this is one point six percent of the entire library budget, however, if you just look at salary costs, it's two point three percent. I think it's a very good deal for the town, we had a very nice negotiation over three or four sessions with the library union, and I do recommend that the board improve this contract. It does need to go to town meeting, and the finance committee as well.
We'll approve the contract.
Second.
Moving seconded. No discussion?
Yeah, just, real quick, just, nice job, Steve, again, in, you know, working through a significant contract negotiation for the town, and getting a good deal for, for the town, and also keeping the, the workers that we, you know, that serve us and help us out when we go into the library and all of that, keeping everybody happy, so, it's a delicate balance, and you just have proven yourself a master at it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this your last contract, right now?
For today, yeah.
Wow.
We have a couple more unions that will have to be, come back in November on.
Very good, yeah. No, Ed?
I mean, the library is such an incredible resource for the town, and to be able to have, you know, the continuity of staff, that's important, it's, and from the taxpayer perspective, just the return on investment that we're getting when you're able to negotiate these sorts of numbers, which are fair numbers, Steve, but also are very, I think we get, we get a lot of being far buck with that, and so, thank you for the work you've done on that.
Thank you. They do work very hard, and they do a great job over there, and Catherine McDonald has really hit the ground running as a new director, so, I appreciate their, their work.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Tarrant Lane, Mr. Mayo?
Yes, as this board knows, we did have a presentation by the supposed developer Yes, as this board knows, we did have a presentation by the supposed developer on Tarrant Lane, and they did file with Mass Housing regarding their, an application under Mass General Law Chapter 40B, or, you know, the affordable housing law for 190 rental units. I did send out a draft letter to the board that perhaps we would send into Catherine Miller at the MHF, MHFA, Mass Housing Finance Agency, to kind of get our oar on the water and things where, that we're looking at. Couple of items that we are looking for extra information on is the number of schoolchildren. We'd like a little bit more numbers there. That was some concerns raised by the board at the time. And the traffic impacts in that area. We would be looking for some more information from them. We'll certainly be doing our own evaluation of that anyway. But this is a normal process that goes through all of these types of projects. This is our chance to give a very quick introductory letter to the state. This does still need to go to the zoning board of appeals process. There'll be public hearings and everything. So this is not stopping any of that. That still goes forward. So this is just the normal procedure. This does help us as a community get to almost exactly at 10% of our housing stock as affordable housing, which is quite, which is actually excellent and allows us to take more control over these issues in the future. So I don't know if there are any comments? Yeah, I can send the letter in if the board is so inclined or if some people want to reach out to me.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then to authorize Mr. Mayo to send the letter for Tarrant Lane in.
Moved.
Second.
Moving second. Do we have any discussion?
Oh, I think, Steve, that I might consider adding is just make a reference to the impact on infrastructure generally, because I know you mentioned the schools and traffic, but if we, you know, that could also mean like emergency services and the like. So I just,
Yep.
I think just to be a little more inclusive, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
And you have the roadways, Steve?
Yep.
Hawkins, upgrade?
Yes.
Any other comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is a proclamation, a request from the Parent Professional Advocacy League regarding Children's Mental Health Week. Mr. Mayo?
Well, this is a, we, we were reached out, someone reached out to, actually to Sherry, regarding that it is National Children's Health, Mental Health Week, and we do have a proclamation, you know, regarding certainly the importance of this issue, not only locally but nationally. And I think that, you know, Wakefield as a community has done a very good job. This board will remember that in our budget, we do have a referral service for families that need to be matched with specialization in this area. We have dedicated school resource offices. We have dedicated people in the school department. So I'm very proud of what this community and this board has done in this regard, and this is, this is really proclaiming that. So I don't know if there are any questions. I know some board members did reach out to the office on it as well, so.
Can I just make a suggestion? So I just looked at our agenda and it actually doesn't say what the proclamation is. And I got some feedback at our last meeting, too. Maybe we should start reading these so people who are watching can actually see what it says. It's not super, super long, but chairman, maybe that's something for, or somebody to read, so people actually know what we're proclaiming or resolving.
So the proclamation that we are providing is, whereas the citizens of Wakefield value their health and mental health and that of their families, therefore they are proud to support observances such as Children's Mental Health Week. And whereas one in five children has a diagnosable mental health disorder and one-half of all lifetime instances of mental illnesses begin before age 14. And even some children in youth with the most intensive needs and some who are insured may not receive services. And whereas children in youth with mental health needs in elementary, middle, and high school are more likely to be bullied, absent, suspended, expelled, or failed to graduate. And whereas learning to recognize the early warning signs of mental health needs and where to obtain the necessary support, assistance, and treatment gives children in youth better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas the participation and partnership of family members in the assessment and treatment of children in the youth is essential to positive outcomes. And whereas our nation's future depends on the health and well-being of its families and their children. And whereas Children's Mental Health Week was developed by families of children with emotional, behavioral, mental health needs to focus on the needs of their children and families in celebrating this year's theme, supporting families, changing futures. It is fitting to increase public awareness among all Wakefield citizens of this important issue. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Wakefield, will hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2018, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was the last item. Now we'll have item eight, matters not anticipated by the chair.
Just, did we vote? Or I should make sure.
No, we didn't. I think you do want to vote.
Yeah, I move we, we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Matters not anticipated by the chairman within 48 hours of the meeting. Ed?
There are two exciting things coming up this weekend. The first being Blossoms at the BB this Saturday. If you've not gotten your tickets yet, please do. It benefits the library and the Chamber, the Wakefield Chamber of Commerce. I think Glendale Field might be tucked in there somewhere, too. And the other is Dodging for Dollars benefiting the Boys and Girls Club. That is this Saturday as well. And I think almost everyone here is part of Team Wakefield. Team Wakefield going against Stonem. I know that we will beat Stonem. So if you have a chance to check that out, that's this Saturday at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Mr. Fallow?
Just a couple of things. First off, just as we look for, we talked tonight about volunteers and things like that. The Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association, just want to thank them for the work they've been doing around the Veterans Common, replacing all the railings. You'll see a bunch of them are down. But, you know, that's, that's the kind of, kind of activities that people in the town have just stepped up and done out of the goodness of their heart and a desire to just improve things. And it's, it's just, it's just nice to see. And it's kind of consistent with the theme of all of the volunteers we have here. The other thing coming up is town meeting on the 30th, right, at 7:00, I believe it starts. So one issue that I think will be interesting on that is the senior tax credit that's on there that we're trying to adopt. And so I think, Steve, you're, usually present that. If I can maybe work on that with you and take a look at, I think sometimes the way those things get presented at town meeting, they can go astray. I'll even give you, you know, some, some feedback on some misunderstanding, misunderstandings I've heard from some people so that we make sure we cover them. But just an important issue that I want to make sure we all realize the value and it passes. And then, and then, hey, finally, further to the volunteer theme, I've been volunteering here for, you know, 16 years. And I would love to continue to volunteer for the town of Wakefield in some capacity, ideally as a selectman. So, you know, I hope people vote me back in tomorrow. So, but either way, I'm very appreciative of the time I've spent here with, with my colleagues and have changed over the years. But it has been wonderful whether I'm back or not. So all good. And I'm proud to serve Wakefield. So, thank you.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, so Maureen and I were at the Friends of the Lake Quanapaw Earth Day yesterday, which is great. A little painful, some blood, some ripped gloves, but a lot of volunteers. I think Maureen and I didn't want to steal any thunder, but jump in at the end and do yours. But lots of people, lots of trash, lots of dangerous vines, like the rosebush kind of vines. So a lot of kids helping, which is great. A lot of families out. And walking around the lake when there's trash on the lake is very different when you're walking around. It's pristine, as we like to see it. It was just a terrific day. To tie in with that, the Friends of the Lake Quanapaw Dinner is a little more in advance. Actually, it's May 23 at the Bear Hill Country Club. So that's coming up. And again, the BB, Blossoms at the BB, as Ed mentioned, and Town Day on the 30th. So it's already been mentioned, but that's it.
Just a second. What Peter said, it was a great day outside. And I think as we talk about volunteering on boards and committees, there's also, we have great nonprofits in town, like Friends of the Lake, and they're always looking for volunteers to help. So check out their Facebook page or website or find someone that already serves and ask them how you can get involved. Echoing what everyone said, and then the one other thing, I think we gave the library a lot of praise today. They also are collecting books for their annual book sale. So if you have anything to donate, drop it off before June 1. And they will have their book sale, I believe it's June 2nd and 3rd, right?
I believe so. Hmm, right.
That's it.
Thank you.
I just want to wish luck to everyone that's running and through their hat into so many races that are happening tomorrow. Certainly my teammates here, I hope you can continue as counselors, because not Board of Selectmen after tomorrow. I also want to remind people that we're not voting at the galvan tomorrow. I think there has been some confusion. So it's the regular four precincts that you report to, which, where you have been voting for the past several years. So good luck to all.
Before I speak.
I just have one very quick thing. That Wednesday, May 2, is Walk to School Day. When I was going to school, every day was Walk to School Day. But Wednesday, May 2, is Walk to School Day. I'd ask the public to be extra careful because there will be much more number of children, you know, walking on the sidewalks and what have you. And we will have the message boards out there for safety on Parker Road and near Dahlberg School, reminding the commuters and the people driving that it is Walk to School Day. It's a great event. I hope the weather is like today so people can really take advantage of it. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to touch on a few of the items that were already brought up. Dodging for Dollars, 11:00, Stonem Boys and Girls Club. We're going to be there to kick some butt. We're going to win. Blossoms at the BB is on the 28, starts at 7:00. Tickets are rapidly selling out. So if you don't have yours, get to the library and pick your tickets up. An item for our May meeting would be that the Festival Italia Committee would like to be put on the agenda to get their approvals for the upcoming festival in August. So if possible, put that on to the May 14. Is that what the date, proper date? That would work. I'll go in chair. I want to thank the committee or the board for putting up with me for a year and catching me on my faux pas and guiding me along the way while I sat in the big chair. It's been a learning curve, I'll tell you that much. Waiting until the last year, ninth year, to receive the chairmanship, you know, you'd think, say, okay, sitting in your chairs is a lot easier. Okay, so I do appreciate the opportunity of being here. It was an honor, a privilege to be sitting as chair. As my friend to the right, we are both seeking to be back here on May 14, doing the best of our ability of what we have been doing right along in that serving the people of Wakefield in the best capacity that we could possibly do. So tomorrow, you have two votes. Hopefully one of them will be mine and maybe the other one will be Brian's and we'll both be here on the 14th. So with that, I want to thank everyone for their patience and support. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are done. What?